All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 4th Board of Supervisors meeting. We will, of course, call this meeting to order here at 9:00, and then we will next start with a moment of silence. And I think Vice Chair Rasmussen has a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm asking the board and the public to join in a moment of silence this morning for Frank Houston, a longtime resident of both Lakeport and Kelseyville. Frank moved to Lake County in 1978 to own and operate Lake County Welder Supply, and he ran the business until his retirement 28 years later. For many years, Frank was an active member of the Early Lake Lions Club in Lakeport, where I had the pleasure of serving with him.
All right. Any other? No? All right. All right. Supervisor Owen, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you. Item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda.
I have no extra items.
No extra items. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an item where all of the listed items, 5.1 through 5.7 today, will be, if not pulled, will be passed in one motion. However, if somebody from the board or from the public wants to pull one for later discussion, they can do so as of now. Anyone from the board want to pull anything? Anyone from the public? Anyone on Zoom? All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Let me get there.
Yes, it's just one.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And so it's 5.1 through 5.7?
5.1 through 5.7.
Excellent.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries, and we will now move on to our timed items. 6.1, 902 is our public input, and public input is if somebody would like to come up and discuss anything that's not on the agenda as of now, and you will have three minutes to do so. Just note that if it's not on the agenda, we will not have a chance to respond to that, but we will refer you to your supervisor or the director, or we'll figure out how to get you to a place to solve or discuss your issue. So is there any public input? Anyone on Zoom? None on Zoom? So with that, we'll go ahead and close public input and move on to our next item, our 903 Pet of the Week. And it looks like we have... We have our pet here.
Hi. I'm Officer Reel with Lake County Animal Care and Control, and this is Mocha. He is a six-to-seven-month-old boxer mix is what we're guessing he is. He is a high-energy puppy, as you can see, but he is an absolute cuddle bug and love bug, loves his treats, toys, and walks. He is available, has been one of our longest residents at the shelter currently for about a month. And if you're curious, interested, want to see him, anything like that, just come on down to the 4949 Hellbush Drive, and we're open from 11 to 4.
Thank you for that. All right. All right. Little happiness and joy before we get further into the agenda. It's always good. We'll move on to our 6.3, our 904, new and noteworthy at the library. And we have Christopher Veach on Zoom.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Christopher Veach, county librarian, and thank you for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. Since March is Women's History Month, I wanted to highlight the book The Movement: How Women's Liberation Transformed America by Clara Bingham. Clara Bingham is an American journalist, author, and documentary producer known for her in-depth reporting on politics, social movements, and women's rights. She's written four books. The movement is an oral history of the 1960s and '70s feminist revolution told through the voices of those who lived it. Clara Bingham traces how women organized, fought for their rights, and defied tradition. Anna Holmes of the New York Times writes, "The movement, a 559-page oral history, is rollicking good fun." In fact, as the veteran journalist Clara Bingham demonstrates in this collection of remembrances, anecdotes, and arguments, the 10 years leading up to the Roe v. Wade decision were downright exhilarating. In addition to the book's first-person narratives, Bingham peppers it with contemporary documents, advertisements, quotes from newspaper and magazine articles to underscore the challenges faced by American women generally, as well as those who were active participants in the movement. The movement is available in print, audiobook, and ebook through the library system, and you can request this book or other materials through our online library catalog, which has the combined resources of Lake-Sonoma and Mendham-Cino County library systems. Requesting items is completely free, and items are sent to your local branch for you to pick up. I also want to highlight this book because the author is one of many who will be participating in our new programming series, Virtual Author Talks. These virtual author talks are in partnership with the Library Speakers Consortium and made possible with funding from the Friends of the Lake County Library. These are live, online events that you can watch from home. You can register on the library website and submit questions to the author ahead of time or during the live presentation. If you aren't able to watch live, you can watch a recording afterwards. Clara Bingham will be talking about her book, The Movement, on Thursday, March 20th at 11:00 a.m. Also this month will be Dan Heath, author of Reset: How to Change What's Not Working, and Jennifer Weiner, author of the novel The Breakway. You can find information about this and more on our website at library.laketcountyca.gov, or come visit your local library branch in Lakeport, Clearlake, Middletown, Upperlake, or on the Bookmobile. Thanks again for listening to what's new and noteworthy at the library.
Well, thank you, Christopher, on that. We appreciate you coming and doing these sessions for us so we can know what's going on at the library and what we can do from there for people to come and check out books, check out some of the other, like, computer and all that good stuff they have over there so they can get online. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close that item and move on to our 6.4, our 905, Presentation of Proclamation Designating March 2025 as Social Worker Appreciation Month in Lake County. And Vice Chair Rasmussen will be reading this proclamation, and if you're here for this item, please come up and stand with the vice chair.
Got everybody? Proclamation Designating the Month of March 2025 as Social Worker Appreciation Month. Whereas people have entered the social work profession for generations because they generally care about helping improve the welfare of people, families, communities, and our nation, and whereas this year's Social Work Month theme, social work compassion action embodies the fact that social workers go through years of education and training so that they have the skills and expertise to transform their care for others into action that brings positive results. And whereas the social work profession has worked for generations to improve living conditions in our nation with social workers successfully pushing for Social Security, a 40-hour work week, Medicare, minimum wage, and whereas social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all people, no matter their race, sexual identity, gender, gender expression, culture, or religion, and whereas social workers follow a code of ethics which sets as the primary mission of the social work profession the enhancement of human well-being and meeting the basic human needs of all people with particular attention to the needs and empowerment of those who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty. And whereas the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing professions in the United States with more than 800,000 people expected to be employed as social workers by 2033. And whereas social workers work in all parts of our society, including schools, social service agencies, veterans' centers, and government, helping people, families, and communities secure services and policies they need to thrive. And whereas social workers are at the forefront of pressing issues our nation is addressing, including increased needs for mental health care, especially for children and adolescents, and substance use disorder treatment, and increased economic and political division, and whereas social workers are one of the largest groups of mental health care providers in the United States and are pressing for social work interstate licensing compact that will improve mental health care and delivery in our nation. And whereas social workers help protect millions of children from abuse and neglect, provide services and support, which helps strengthen families that are under stress, and help create new families through adoption. And whereas research proves the presence of social workers in schools, hospitals, and assisting living facilities improve education and health outcomes and quality of life for students, patients, and residents. And whereas social workers continue to stand ready to assist our nation in overcoming present and future challenges, including ending gun violence, improving health care and mental health care for all, and urging lawmakers to adopt immigration reforms. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Lake County's social workers that the Lake County Board of Supervisors hereby declares the month of March 2025 as Social Worker Appreciation Month in Lake County and calls upon all citizens to join in the celebration and support of social work profession. Passed and adopted this fourth day of March 2025, signed by the Chair, E.J. Crandall.
Thank you, Supervisor Rasmussen, and thank you, board. I just want to take a minute to acknowledge our social workers. Here with me, we have some social workers from Lake County Social Services, but as the proclamation said, there are social workers throughout our community. I want to commend them all for the work they do every day. It is not easy. In Social Services, we have adult protective services, IHSS social workers, child protective social workers, and Employment Services social workers. As the proclamation said, they're out there protecting our families, our children, the elderly in our community, helping people become self-sufficient. So, an acknowledgement of everyone in our community serving as a social worker, I want to commend you all, and thank you personally for the work you do. I'm Rachel Delman-Person, Social Services Director.
Hi, Amy Schmantsky. I'm the Deputy Director over the Adult Services Branch, and as I sit here listening to the proclamation for I'm not sure how many times now, I can't help but think about when I started as a social worker and how, for me, it was just my small world, we'll call it. You know, keeping my head down, doing my cases and working the cases, and not really thinking much of it because that was the job. But as I've moved up through supervision and various levels of management, I realize, as I see it from the other side, you know, how hard it is, how there's just so much going on, and the increased need, maybe since pandemic, and our ever-increasing senior population, the caseloads are growing. The work is more challenging, and yet I still see social workers every day putting their nose down, doing the same thing, and just getting the work done with grace and compassion and integrity. And so I just wanted to take a minute while we're here today to acknowledge that and say that I appreciate them. I appreciate the work that's done, whether they're here with me in the room today, watching on Zoom. We're out in the field helping those very people. I appreciate them, and I see you. I appreciate you, and I can't be more humbled to be part of your team. And so today's for you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? And then, yes, we will take a picture too. I just wanted to say real quick before we get into the pictures that I appreciate the work that you do. As a product of Social Services, growing up, my mother had me at a really young age, and so having empathy, having that representation, being able to understand the predicament that folks are in, not to mention also, you know, child protective services, having that under your purview as well is very important, especially in this county. You know, we have a really, you know, indigent, you know, county when it comes to need and whatnot. And so with that, we really count on your department and you all to do the work that you do. And again, I appreciate it because I come from that, and so I appreciate the work you do. And I look to you for your guidance when it comes to this, and I appreciate your guidance as it is. So thank you. All right. So it's picture time. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Megan Morgan. I'm here from Lake County Behavioral Health Services on behalf of Director Elise Jones. She's very sorry she couldn't be here today, but she did have some words that she wanted to share. "In the quiet moments and the chaos alike, in the light..." Okay. I'm gonna start over. "In the quiet moments and the chaos alike, in the light of hope and the shadow of despair, there stands the social workers unseen by many, but to those they serve, a lifeline, a light, and a guide. Theirs is not just a profession but a calling, a divine purpose written in the language of service, where hands uplift the weary, hearts bear the burdens of others, and voices speak for those long unheard. They walk where the world turns away, they hold the broken where others let go, they bear witness to suffering yet never lose faith, for they know that even the smallest kindness can turn the tide. Social workers see the very best and the very worst of humanity, yet still they choose love, still they choose justice, still they choose to believe that change is possible. To the ones who stay long after office hours, who bring dignity to the forgotten and hope to the hopeless, who fight battles unseen and hold space for healing, we see you, we honor you, and we thank you. For you are the angels among us, and though your wings may be invisible, your impact is undeniable."
Oh, that was beautiful.
I think that's... I'm glad you said that because it sparked one more thing for me is a lot of your work is done after hours as well, and there's a lot of feelings that come into that from some of the folks that you serve. You have to carry that home at times. It's like an energy transfer, and you go home seeing and dealing with some of these things. So it's important for you all to have self-care, because I know I've been there. I've had to go to a couple of hearings and things like that in court, and it's really tough when you see a lot of the involvement with the feelings of the families being broke apart or anything that has to happen that way. So make sure self-care.
Now, we are going to move on to our next item. It's 6.5, our 9/15 Presentation of the 2025 Weights and Measures Report. And it looks like we have Catherine Vanderwall here, the Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. Good morning.
Good morning.
Catherine Vanderwall, Agricultural Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. And with me this morning is Sam Upton, Deputy Agricultural Commissioner, Deputy Sealer of Weights and Measures. So, I'd like to thank you for your time this morning in allowing us to present our Weights and Measures Report, which is fairly new. We brought this to the Board last year for the first time ever with a published report as well as a presentation to you. So, the idea behind this is just to bring awareness to the other aspect of our department, the Weights and Measures part of it. It's kind of one of those things that maybe a lot of people are not aware of, but it impacts every consumer almost every single day. So, with that, we'll go ahead and get started, and right here is actually our new weight truck. So, thank you to your Board for the help in that, and we actually have it parked out front this morning, so it can be viewed. So, every week, March 1st through 7th is recognized as National Weights and Measures Week. So, this is not a Lake County thing, it's not a California thing, this is a national thing. So, and the theme this year is building a lasting legacy. So, Weights and Measures Week commemorates John Adams' signing of the first Weights and Measures law back in 1799. So, you can see Weights and Measures has been around for quite some time. So, this is an overview, and it does go by fiscal year. So, this is the previous fiscal year, 2324 overview of what our department accomplished. The reason we go by fiscal year is because we are required to submit a report to the state of California every year, and the reporting period is based on fiscal year. So, to try to compile the data in a calendar year would be very time-consuming for us. So, just know, I mean, similar to the crop report, we're always looking kind of like at the past year. So, in 2324, there were 213 business locations inspected, 889 commercial devices inspected, and 17 consumer complaints. So, what are some of the devices that are registered in Lake County? So, we have gas pumps, counter and computing scales, large-capacity scales, so those would be like your livestock scales, truck scales, propane meters, electric sub-meters, vapor sub-meters, and then, of course, we have cannabis scales. So, our county does have a device registration ordinance in which we recently amended and your Board approved. So, this is every commercial weighing and measuring device that's used is registered in our county, which allows us to get these numbers. So, weighing and measuring devices, so what do we do? So, we determine if the devices are suitable for commercial use. Sometimes, we find that these devices are not. With e-commerce, you know, it's easy for businesses to go online and order their scale or order another device, but sometimes, we find that it's not actually approved for commercial use. So, we are then educating that business or the owner of that device and notifying them of, like, how they know an approved device and which ones they could purchase. So, then, we also go out and we test their devices to determine their accuracy. So, these are just an example of some of the devices. You can see the water stations, those are common around the county. People go and, you know, fill up their five-gallon or one-gallon chugs, a scale at the grocery store, or gas pumps. So, a little bit about scales, so there's a variety of scales. You can see there's from small to large. Excuse me. So, the scales that, you know, that you go in and, say you go to the grocery store and you go to the deli and you ask for a pound of, I don't know, prime rib or something. It's like, so how do you know you're actually getting a pound of that product, and they're not also including the packaging material, right? So, our staff, my staff goes in there and they test those scales. As well as when you go through the checkout stand at a grocery store, there's usually a scale built in, so you know they'll run across your produce if it's price per pound. So, we're testing those for accuracy as well. Some livestock scales, truck scales. Yeah. Is there anything else we want to add on scales? And then, another one is petroleum. So, you know, when you go to the gas station, you might see the little seal on there, I think it's red and white for 2025, I think it was blue and white last year. So, our staff actually go out and we test these devices, one, to make sure that the amount that's being dispensed is accurate, so that way, when you know you're pumping your gas and you're paying for a set amount, you're actually getting that set amount. So, we're testing for the accuracy. We also sample for quality standards, and then, we send that sample into the state lab. So, whether it's gasoline, diesel, and sometimes, those are also based off complaints, so if there's a complaint received, we'll go out and take a sample and send that into the state lab also. We also check the advertising and labeling of petroleum products and respond to complaints. So, the one middle picture there is a skimmer device, so that's something in addition we do when we do our petroleum inspections, we're also looking for these skimming devices, which are devices that are designed to steal people's credit card information. Some meter inspections, probably the more common ones that we do, so delivery trucks on fuel delivery, you know, this could be like if you have propane delivered to your house for your heater or some other type of heating fuel, or stationary. Maybe you go to the gas station and you're filling up your propane tank for your barbecue. So, those devices are metered out, so we also check for the accuracy on those to make sure that people are actually getting what they're paying for. And these are sub-meters. So, at my office, we are responsible for testing sub-meters and responding to complaints. So, this is where you have a utility that's coming into a master meter, and then, it's being dispersed out to sub-meters. So, think of apartment complexes, mobile home parks, so you have, you know, a utility that's coming into the master meter, and then, each individual unit has a meter also. So, we are responsible for testing those devices and responding to complaints. So, not if you're a home with PG&E or City Water, we don't do those. But this would include like water meters, propane meters, and electric meters.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
On the electric meters, does it just do the, like, for instance, there's, might be different prices according to what time of the day it is?
Yeah. So, for sub-meter situations, it's PG&E that sets the rate for that park, and so, for mobile home parks, they don't have the time of use available to those folks. We also handle billing complaints where we do look at whether those rates and those tiers in those rates that they have are being followed. So, we'll check PG&E's website, see what rates they should be charging the customers at that mobile home park, and then, we'll do the calculations, make sure that they're getting the correct calculations for those tiers and those rates. For vapor meters, one thing I could add to that is those devices are owned by the gas companies like Suburban or Marigaz or something, where the electric meters are owned by the mobile home parks. So, those companies, whether it's the mobile home park or whether it's the gas company, are the ones responsible for making sure those devices are accurate.
Okay, and, but do they break it out by higher rates during the day and lower rates at night, or do they?
No.
No, it's just all a flat rate then?
It's not a flat rate per se, but it is, it's not a time-of-use rate, that's the nighttime, daytime thing. But they do have to, on the bill, the bill has to be itemized, just like you'd get from PG&E. So, if your mobile home park is providing a bill, it's got to have all the information, how many days were in that month, what the rate was, you know, your baseline quantity, whatever that is. And so, just everything that would normally be on a PG&E bill would have to be on this bill that the mobile home park provides to tenant.
Okay.
Price verification, so currently, our county does not have a price verification ordinance, other counties in the state do. So, a price verification ordinance helps ensure that price verification inspections are happening, so this is, Weights and Measures staff will go into stores and they'll, there's a process where they kind of randomly take items off the shelf, and then, they're checking to see if those prices ring up at the advertised price. So, what we do here in Lake County currently is we respond to complaints. So, one thing with price verification is that by law, there is no such thing as an expired sale sign. So, if a store has a sale price still advertised and they charge the consumer a higher price because they have that sale sign still posted, they have to honor the lower price. Newer technology, so these are kind of, it's new and emerging technology, the electric vehicle charging stations as well as digital meters that we're starting to see, so there's some challenges with these devices, and Sam can, of course, speak more to this. Some of the challenges include with the electric charging vehicle stations, is that right? Electric vehicle charging stations? It's finding out who actually owns those devices, because a company or the owner will just go in and put them into a parking lot somewhere or a gas station, and it's not necessarily that business or that gas station that owns that device, the device is owned by somebody else. So, as well as testing these devices, so currently, the state has standards that can be loaned out to counties to test these devices, as they are kind of cost prohibitive for a county to purchase, not to mention that technology is changing so fast that some of the standards that were previously approved are kind of already outdated, so it is a challenge. And I believe they also are temperature-sensitive, so when you're going out testing the devices, you know, having a shade structure or, you know, other things to kind of keep the device from overheating. And then, with the digital meters, a lot of things are being moved digitally, which is great. It allows for companies to, you know, read the device remotely, and then, it's easier for them to do their billing, they don't have to send somebody out to physically go and inspect each device and take the reading. Some of the things we're seeing with that, though, is that those devices can be manipulated, which is not okay. Do you want to speak more to those?
Yeah. So, for the new technology devices, the different electric meters and water meters, one of the biggest issues that we're seeing is that manufacturers are coming up with new technology at a fast pace, and it's hard for the state to keep up with checking those devices and making sure that they're meeting the standards that previous devices were meeting. And so, sometimes, they get to us, you know, somebody will see them online and order a device, and they'll get to us before the state has a chance to fully evaluate it. And so, we're seeing devices that haven't been fully tested to be commercial devices. And so, they have these capabilities which haven't been thoroughly checked, like the remote access type of thing, where it has the capability for somebody to access it and change, you know, from cubic feet for water meter, for example, to gallons and back and forth without any way of preventing that from happening once we've checked it. So, we've checked it, we said, okay, it's accurate, it goes out in the field, it could still be digitally manipulated later. And so, I guess it's one of those things where the state has to keep up, I guess, with this technology, but a lot of times, it falls on us at the county to kind of evaluate these devices as well.
Yeah, and I would kind of just piggyback off what Sam was saying. So, for a commercial device to be in use, it has to be type-approved by the state of California. So, that's where we're seeing like a lot of these new devices that have not been fully vetted or type-approved for use. Are there any questions?
I have one. You were talking about the cannabis scale. Is that used also for hemp, or is there another scale for that, or do you even weigh hemp?
So, with cannabis particularly, they have to be part of what's called a track-and-trace program, which was kind of put into the law. And the track-and-trace requires weights to be taken at all these different stages of the process, from when they harvest it to when they ship it, from when it gets processed and then shipped again. And every time it's weighed, those weights, those times it's tested, it needs to be a certified scale. And so, for cannabis particularly, they're required to have these commercial devices throughout the process. Hemp, there probably are scales, but it's more of at a retail level or some other part of the process, it's not baked into the law like cannabis was.
There's no real need to weigh it?
Probably not, but I'm certain, certainly, there would be situations where somebody might harvest a lot of hemp and be selling it to somebody else, and there would be a transaction related to the weight, and if that was the case, then that would kind of fall under any other scale, where if there's a commercial transaction, then we would need to test it. But cannabis were really involved because they need to have these scales, you know, even the producers of the cannabis are required to have these commercial scales. So, since it's a commercial scale, we need to test it, and most of the folks here in this county are producers, but even as producers, they need to have a scale, and we got to go out and test it.
I know it's a total different deal because the hemp is mainly for the actual stock, not for the product of cannabis, but I just wondered because it's on the farm bill that you can actually, you know, grow hemp and whatnot, so just a thought, dumb question. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
So, throughout the fiscal year, is this an ongoing process where every month you're out, like, or I guess, for example, with gas stations, do you do that all at one time, or is that like ongoing throughout the whole year?
It's definitely ongoing throughout the year. Certain devices, we try to test it at certain times. If it's like propane delivery trucks, we try to test those when they're not really active, so we try to do it in like spring or summer, because in the winter, they're really busy, same with like fuel delivery trucks. Gas stations and small scales, we usually do in the wintertime, but there's no real set time. We try to get there about a year from when we tested it before.
All right, thank you.
I have a question about the cannabis scale. How is that different than a regular scale?
For the most part, it's not different. There are certain circumstances where they want a really high-precision scale, and so, that is different because those scales, those high-precision scales require little tiny weights, really high-precision weight standards to test it. And so, we did need a while back, purchase a special weight kit to test those precision scales. Before cannabis was around, we did have that occasionally, like if there was a jewelry scale, for example, we would need those, but it was so rare that we didn't have one of those particular weight kits. But now that there's cannabis operations that have those scales, then, we do test those on occasion, but it's probably only, I don't know, 10% or 20% of the scales out there are those precision scales. Most of the cannabis folks here are producers, and so, they have, they're weighing weights that are, they're more than those precision scales, so then, they use pretty much a scale that anyone else would, it's just under different circumstances.
I see. Thank you.
Do you, the scales at like the garbage facilities, do you inspect those as well? And so, okay, and that's part of it, to make sure that whatever they're weighing when it comes to that, it's accurate, yeah, okay. All right, do you have another question?
No, I'm sorry, Ed, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that wants to talk about this item.
Good morning, Julia Carrera, Upper Lake. Thank you for your...
Thank you for your informative presentation. I have a clarification question that I was actually asked by Katie Evans that I didn't have the answer for, and this is the great opportunity to get it. I heard that, um, I heard you say you don't inspect meters on residential homes, but with this, um, lack of housing and the laws encouraging accessory dwelling units, currently the law as of January 1st, you can have up to eight ADUs. Where do, those sub-meters for those units, do you inspect those both for water and electricity or not? Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good question and I think that's a new arena that we would have to look into because it also depends on who's regulating it. So like if it's, if it's going into a home, it's under the Public Utilities Commission. So having multiple dwellings on a property that are being sub-metered out is something that we'd have to look into unless you know, unless you've heard anything recently.
Yes, it's the California Public Utilities Commission that would handle those type of situations. A lot of times it's an issue with rates too, where PG&E is charging them like a residential rate. And so there's a conflict with the rates that they're charged. They're charged the wrong rate because it's the sub, it's really a sub-metered situation. But I, I do believe that falls under the California Utility Commission.
Okay, well, just one more question, I'm sorry.
Well, if you can, if you're going to have another one, go ahead, but, um, we, we don't have a back and forth commonly. We're going to just go through the three minutes, so if you can wrap it up.
Those sub-meters are certified for five years. So I'm wondering who does the recertification after five years? Thank you.
Yeah, if you, if you can answer, go ahead.
The ones we check are, are ten years. We, it's a 10-year interval between the meters when they need to be checked again.
All right. Any other questions from Zoom? All right, not hearing any. We'll close this item if there's nothing else and thank you for the presentation, appreciate it and, uh, keep, keep up the good work. All right, let's see, we're at 9:41. Did you recommend 7.2?
Actually, uh, Chair, I would recommend, uh, if you're going to go to 6.6 beforehand or do you want to wait till 10?
6.1.
Move it to a future date.
Okay, are we allowed to address that right now, County Council, or do, should we wait till 10? Okay, um, well, let's, let's see if we can take a five-minute break. I know usually it's a good opportunity to do so. All right, well, so we'll be back at about 9:45-ish. All right, so we're back from our break, a little more than five minutes, but we got a nice picture with the new truck, so. Um, we'll go ahead and do a couple of, uh, non-timed items. Um, it looks like we have a 7.4 from last week, we can knock that out real quick. And that is the consideration of the following advisory board appointments, Animal Control Advisory Board and the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. And so we will go ahead and start with the animal control, uh, position. It looks like we have Charmaine Weldon, a new applicant from District 3. I am fine with that appointment and, uh, we don't have any other applicants, so I, I know that they carried this forward from last week. Thank you very much for doing that. I will go ahead and open it to the public if there's anyone that would like to make a comment about this, uh, position, advisory position. Anyone on Zoom? Bring it back to the board for action.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Charmaine Weldon for Animal Control Advisory Board, District 3.
I will second that.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, 3-0. And then we have the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. We have two positions or two vacancies, um, District 1 Representative and 1 Recreation. We have Jeremy Rarick, uh, for the recreation seat and Robert Loudermilk for the District 1 seat.
And I'd like to make a motion, or do we need to?
Yeah, if there's any comments about the, uh...
Nope, I support them both.
Okay. Anyone from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Okay, I'd like to move that we appoint Robert Liermilk for the Fish and Wildlife for, um, District 1 and, uh, Jeremy Rarick for Fish and Wildlife for the Recreation.
A second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And so then we will go on to 7.2, consideration of letter of support for, is that okay? Yeah. Consideration of letter of support for North Coast Opportunities Head Start Child Development Program. And, uh, this is sponsored by myself and Supervisor Pyska. She is of course in DC, so, um, I had confirmed with her that she's okay with it being passed today, if, if we do pass it. Um, and so this is to, uh, support, um, the Head Start Program, uh, when it comes to the funding and whatnot. So they wanted to send, uh, these to the elected officials and what, to encourage the support of, um, the budget and things of that nature. So, um, I don't know, I know Lisa was on, I don't know if she's on for any questions. I know, uh, Mrs. Judd. Um, so, um, any questions from the public? I'll open it up or for that. Not on Zoom? Bring it back to the board. Does anybody have any comments about this? Sorry, I didn't bring it up earlier.
I guess the only question is, I believe when I read the letter, it said, "To whom it may concern," um, but I'm okay with, um, I don't know if names are going to be added later, but I'm okay with it.
Oh, okay.
Going wherever it needs to go.
Right. So should we say, uh, elected representative or should we?
Probably.
To whoever the representative we're sending it to, just send it that way? Oh, okay, yeah.
Then that's fine, I'm good with it.
All right.
Yep.
All right. And I opened it up, right, already? Okay, so if there's, then I guess the last thing to do is take action.
I'll make a motion that we approve letter of support for North Coast Opportunities Head Start Child Development Program.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second and, uh...
Mr. Chair, just to add, uh, for clarification, authorize the chair to sign the letter.
And I'll, I'll modify my motion to include authorizing the chair to sign.
Excellent.
And I'll second that.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. You have a recommendation? Should we do 7.3 or?
Yes, at least Director Jones is on Zoom.
All right.
For this item.
We'll move on to 7.3, consideration of Amendment Number 5 to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Willow Glen Care Center for Adult Residential Support Services and Special, Specialty Mental Health Services for Fiscal Years 22, 23, 23, 24, and 24 and 25 in the amount of $1,385,000. And this is, uh, Behavioral Health Services and, uh, Director Jones, if you're online, go ahead and unmute and...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I apologize I cannot be there today and I appreciate the flexibility to appear, um, fully virtually. Um, Willow Glen provides mostly placements for people on LPS conservatorship, um, uh, and we have a lot of people on LPS conservatorship and it is growing. Um, and actually we will be reaching out to Willow Glen and other, um, contracted providers and likely also, uh, release a request for qualifications for additional services to support the implementation of Senate Bell 43. So just want to speak to the fact that, um, these costs will likely increase. Uh, so that is what I have to say about this item. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Did you have one? Okay, no worries on that. Uh, anyone from the public? I'll open it up for public input. Not seeing or hearing any, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Amendment Number 5 to the Agreement Between County of Lake and Willow Glen Care Center...